Good evening. We will call the order of this session of our city council meeting, which is our regular meeting. We've just finished our study meeting just a few moments ago. We thank you all for coming. We note that we have a quorum present. All council members are here with the exception of Councilman Nordfeldt, who is excused tonight. Our opening ceremony tonight will be given by Councilman Corey Rushton. Councilman Rushton.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, my wife and I were able to visit the great city of Boston, Massachusetts, and a trip to the Kennedy Library, to where I found out that they had just released a comic book that had not ever been released, and it was the first one, and it was President Kennedy and Superman. And we got to look through the panels of it, and President Kennedy had enlisted Superman's help for his new agenda on physical fitness. The comic book was slated to be released with this new campaign on physical fitness, but was canceled due to the untimely assassination of the President. And so what I had asked Jake to do tonight was accompany the comic book with this public service announcement by President Kennedy, and so I thought it was very interesting and also maybe very timely now that school is out and there's the many things that are going on in West Valley. So I'll ask Jake to queue up this 19, early 1960s public service announcement from President Kennedy, and then ask all of you to rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance to start this meeting.
I welcome this opportunity to speak to the people of America about a subject which I believe to be most important, and that is the subject of physical fitness. And I speak not only as President of the United States, but also as a parent of two children, who I hope will grow up with those qualities of vigor and energy, which we identify with the best of America. This should be a matter of concern to us all. A country as strong really as its citizens, and I think that mental and physical health, mental and physical vigor, go hand in hand. I hope that we will not find a day in the United States when all of us are spectated, except for a few who are on the field. I hope all Americans will be on the field, as they will concern themselves with the education of their children, with the physical development of their children, with the participation in the vigorous lives, and then also as their children get older, and complicate into them a desire to maintain that vigor through their normal lives. Our citizens are living longer, and we want them to participate fully in that longer life, but they can only do so if they give some of their time and some of their effort to maintain that vitality. This is a subject which should be of interest to us all, and I hope and we are seeing the astonishing results which we have seen from our work in a huge schools across the country, where we've been able in the short space of two or three months to change the physical habits and strength of our children. But this will spread through every school district in the United States, that all of us will participate in the life around us, and in so doing, we'll be better citizens and happier. This is a challenge for us all, children, boys and girls, college students, mothers and fathers, and all of us, I think, should welcome it. I hope all of you will join in a great national effort to build a strong and better America through physical effort and through the contributions we can make by the drive and force we bring into our daily lives.
Could you please join me now?
Pledge of Allegiance.
I proudly, most as we do, honor the United States of America and the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we go to the approval of the minutes of July 1st, 2014, to the council. Move for approval? We have a motion before us to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Yon. The motion is properly before us. Any discussion to the minutes from our July 1st meeting? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously. Minutes are approved. Next, we have some recognitions we will take care of. Councilman Vincent is going to recognize our Employee of the Month, Dan Strong.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, would Dan Strong please stand? Thank you. This nomination was by Ryan Robinson from the prosecutor's office. He says, "I would like to nominate Dan Strong as Employee of the Month." Dan is an excellent prosecutor who is always willing to take cases to trial when necessary. He has completed four jury trials this year, winning three of them. He is particularly skilled at trying DUIs and is our go-to attorney for those types of cases. He successfully litigated many more bench trials and suspension motions this year and has resolved dozens, if not hundreds, of other cases. This month, Dan volunteered and completed a lengthy and complicated brief that was submitted this week to the Utah Courts of Appeal. Dan put many, many hours into the research and writing of this brief and did a great job. We in the Criminal Division value Dan's hard work and his willingness to step up and take on tough assignments. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the EAC Division of the Quarter Award for Hartman Senior Recreation Center staff and Councilman Bueller at staff. Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. And I recognize that there are people here from the Harmon Home and from Parks and Recreation. This nomination was written and submitted by Linda Westfall. I would like to nominate the Harmon Senior Recreation Center staff for Division of the Quarter. Every year, this center plans a full week of activities for the seniors that they call Camp Wrinkle. This week is dedicated and filled with adventures to various locations, and some of those locations included Mona, Utah, and Cold Springs. Also, there were a potato derby and a sing-along and a pajama party, which may have been the genesis for the name Camp Wrinkle. Various locations that take our seniors back in time to their younger years, allowing them the opportunity to once again experience the fun of being a kid. This week of day-long activities and travel takes the staff months of preparations to make and complete for the itinerary for each of those days. While still fulfilling their daily work activities they must plan to follow at the center. Each of these staff members go way above and beyond their normal work week during Camp Wrinkle with extended hours, physical and emotional demands, to help our seniors enjoy each of these daily events throughout the week. The staff's cheerful and fun attitude makes them such a great team, and you never hear a complaint from any of them. And you just see our seniors playing laser tag, wearing their pajamas to the movies, riding their go-karts, rafting, fishing, and just loving the indoor and outdoor adventures. Each year, Camp Wrinkle Week has been so successful that it fills up within the first week of sign-ups. This says so much about the staff's commitment and loyalty to serve. Please consider rewarding the Harmon Senior Recreation Center staff for their dedication and hard work in making Camp Wrinkle such a great success for our seniors here in West Valley City. And of course, that nomination was considered, and that division is the Division of the Quarter.
We've got to get the staff to come up and to see their award and get their picture taken. Let's shake our hands.
Thanks, I'm counting down the days till I can.
I'm sorry, one more. Oh, it's too... We need the lobs.
Thank you.
Thank you. We use this opportunity during our meetings to recognize people who do work that deserves to be recognized as a great thing that we do here in the city. We appreciate the work of those who go above and beyond their normal duties. Next on our agenda is for public comment. We have two people sign up. Claudia Jensen, if you would come forward and state your name and address, and you have your five minutes that you can...
My name is Claudia Jensen, and I'm with the Valley Youth Hunter Hills neighborhood in Watch. We as a committee are very concerned with your wanting to have utopia. I don't agree with people voting for how I can spend my money or putting things on my utility yields when they're high enough as it is. I understand from Corey that this started about 10 years ago, which I was not aware of, but people, you guys have got to remember, there are a lot of old folks in this city that are on fixed incomes. And let me tell you something, fixed incomes are not a lot of money. You can't do anything hardly with it. It's just lucky that my husband has a pension from where he worked at Hercules at one time. And I just think you guys ought to reconsider this. I know it costs the city money, but the city shouldn't have decided for us in the first place without a vote on the ballot. And I'm hoping that you guys will get rid of it as soon as you possibly can, and thank you very much.
Thank you. You were right. You were very brief. Next, we have Dorothy Holiday. You would come forward. Same thing, name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Dorothy Holiday. I live at 3694 Bishop Street. My concern is the gutters that are being replaced. I've lived at that address for 50 years. I am one of two peoples, still the original people, living on Bishop Street. Some of the homes are rentals, and most of them are rentals. What my concern is, that the gutters that are being replaced, I don't know who the contractor is, but in my time of living there, when the water comes down the street after a rainstorm, there's flooding. And some of this, I know from my other house, that the water has run right down the driveway, and it goes right into Market Street. My home, they're putting the gutters in, they are just flat. The neighbor next door to me, I noticed it today, the road, the street and the gutter that they've put in are even. There's nothing for the water to run, it will run right on the street. And on American Drive at 37, 22 American Drive, the water comes down American Drive and cuts off into Bishop Street. The same thing. They have not put an area that the water can turn. It's flat. Where's the water going to run from American Drive down Bishop Street? It's just going to come right around and flood. And that's what my concern is. The contractor has not made the gutters deep enough. In too many areas, it's flat with the road. It's New C-Mid, and in my area, they just put the gutter right in front, maybe 50 feet. Where the gutter should have been replaced is where the drive is. I drive into the driveway, it's all cracked up. And it's right in front of the house is where they put it in. The driveway, the gutter there is cracked up, broken down, and it's on, I have another home on Bishop Street, the same thing. It's all cracked up, and they replaced maybe 50 feet, 60 feet, and that is it. And I'm concerned about it, and I think somebody needs to look at it and readjust the way they're doing the gutters there in West Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we only have the two people scheduled to sign, or signed up to speak, so we assume that's all. We actually have quite a few people here, so... Now, if you're here to speak on one of the items on our agenda that's set for a public hearing, then we will have an opportunity to do that. Oh, we don't have any public hearings, so I guess come forward. Can't be anything else. I wasn't here last week, so I have to look at the agenda for you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Keith Stoney, and to be upfront with you, I'll tell you that I have 31 years' experience as an employee for West Valley City. I love this city, and I love what the city has done over that period of time. I'm here to speak on the resolution regarding the Civil Service Commission. I was one of the original attorneys that established the Civil Service Commission back in the early '80s, when the city was brand new. I was there, I drafted many of the, I guess you'd say, the rules and regulations that have long since been changed, and frankly, are much better than whatever I could have done. My concern is, is that you're looking at getting rid of the Civil Service Commission. Now, in all honesty, I also represent Detective Sean Callie, who was terminated, and I have a personal interest with respect to the Civil Service Commission because of that, and you should know it. And being an attorney, you can listen with one ear or whatever you choose to do as well. I should also mention, Mr. Mayor, that I believe we met 12 years ago, and my father was your coach at that period of time. 12 years ago? I felt 40 something years ago. So did I. I'm going to tell you that the officers that are here in the city are entitled to be adjudged by the Civil Service Commission and have their discipline heard by the Civil Service Commission, and there are statutory places that allow that. My concern is, is that the timing of this is very poor for the city. Certainly Detective Callie has the right to due process, and that due process was established, it's been begun. There are other officers that are in the process of, I guess you'd call it discipline as well, that have the right to that. It's been our understanding that, and we've heard from the Police Department and administrators in the Police Department say things like, "Did you see what happened with the last hearing?" Well, I was at the last hearing, and to be quite honest, the Civil Service Commission made the correct decision. And I'm not here to say that I believe that the officer that was involved is a great officer. I'm just saying that the evidence that was presented to them was not enough for them to uphold the decision of the chief to discipline under those circumstances. Now, not all of the evidence was presented, and that was a decision that the prosecutors or the attorneys that tried the case made a decision to do. So it can't be alleged that the Civil Service Commission is broken. In fact, the Civil Service Commission demonstrated that it works under those circumstances. By doing what you're attempting to do at this point in time, it's looking like the city is running and hiding from one bad decision over 30-plus years of decisions. And I would suggest you rethink that. I would also suggest that you understand that because the officers that are involved in the system right now have due process rights, you're asking us to file appeals. They would go directly to the Court of Appeals. I have no doubt that the Court of Appeals would turn around and say those officers, because the system is in place when they were disciplined, are entitled to have the Civil Service Commission hear their cases. I would suggest that you rethink changing the Civil Service Commission at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe that concludes everyone who wanted to come and speak with that. And what we do, people are allowed to speak and say what they want. It's not a debate, but we do allow a response from the city and the council. And tonight, our city manager is away, and so Nicole Cottle is our acting city manager. She serves as one of the assistant managers here in the city. Ms. Cottle, do you have any comments that you want to add on these?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick comment for Ms. Holiday. What a treat to have a 50-year citizen in the house with us tonight. And just to let her know, I will ask our Public Works Director to take a look at that and to take a look at the contract and certainly ensure that that's being handled appropriately. I'll do that tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. And in fact, if they want to visit afterwards, I guess they could with the public works, if you're willing to stay, but otherwise, we'll continue on with our agenda. And then to the council for comments. Seeing none. We will move forward now to the next item on our agenda. We thank those who did come to speak. We do appreciate getting citizen input, and thank you for that. We have a couple of resolutions. First, Resolution 14-120, Resolution dissolving the West Valley City Civil Service Commission. And I was not here last week, but I believe that this has probably been introduced fairly well by some comments here, and the council has discussed that so that the public is aware, and those listening in as well as those of you here tonight. These items are discussed in a study meeting, and then a week later, they are dealt with in the regular council meeting. So all of these items were discussed last week by the majority of the council. I happen to not be there, but, so these are not new items, they've been discussed. So we will come to the council. Let's see, is there anything we need to introduce there to add to that?
No, sir, not unless the council has additional questions from last week.
Okay. So to the council then, Resolution 14-120, dissolving the West Valley City Civil Service Commission. Discussion or comments? I was looking the wrong way, so... Councilman Bueller.
Ms. Carl, just for clarification and for the benefit of the public and those who may be watching, when we discussed this last week, we were informed as to the various parties involved and whether they opposed or approved of this idea. Could you be kept up for us?
It's okay with the council and the mayor. I'd ask our good city attorney to approach and do that for us. That's okay.
Thank you, Eric Bunderson, for West Valley City, the city attorney for West Valley City, sorry. Yes, in answer to the question, sir, if I may, the proposed change was discussed with both the police and fire unions, as well as the individuals on the Civil Service Commission themselves. As of last week, Mr. Isaac had conducted all of those interviews, and he reported to the council last week that he had received positive feedback from the police and fire unions. And as far as the Civil Service Commission, the two gentlemen on the commission that he had spoken to both expressed relief in a sense that they were moving away, that the city was considering moving away from the Civil Service Commission. He hadn't spoken to the chairperson at the time. I believe he's done that since, but I haven't heard a report back from him on how that went. The other issue that I would bring up at this point to the council is that Dave Attridge's term ended on July 1st, so if the council votes against dissolving the Civil Service Commission, we will need to appoint another Civil Service Commission member to take his place or reappoint him, whatever the case may be. And that appointment's done through the city manager's choice with advice and consent of the council.
Councilman Bueller. Thank you. Mr. Bunderson, while you're there, I'll ask you these questions.
Sure.
And this change, this has been something that's been considered for how long?
The city attorney's office first memos on this issue, the first research that we started doing it was about 2011.
The law that we have to follow is enacted by the state legislature, and they allow for either a public service commission, such as we have had, or a hearing officer, which has been proposed that we adopt instead.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So either avenue is legal and allowed by the law that governs us and governs the employees' rights and protects their rights as far as interests that they may have in their job.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Vincent.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. I would say as well that a hearing officer, as has been, as we've looked at the process and the procedure, would benefit the city in being more efficient, saving the city money, and providing us with, and the employees whose jobs are on the line, with what we expect to be more timely and more clearly stated decisions that either party could then appeal if an appeal was warranted, and still protect the rights that the employees have. There will always be cases in the pipeline. It's just like in the court system, a judge cannot finish all of his thousands of cases before he retires, so the new judge can take over. The new judge has to take the cases as they are and hear them and make just decisions, and that's what I would expect to happen here. And with that, I'll move for approval of Resolution 14-120.
The motion is before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Lang. The motion is properly before us. Discussion to the motion. Councilman Vincent.
Just maybe one question, maybe I should have asked this before the motion. Now, this person that would be hired by the city to do this, it would be an outside entity?
Yes, just that we provide for typically with our ALJ, that does some of our case is very similar situation. It'd be vetted like a contractor and be hired outside.
The one concern that I'm having is, I do like the idea of having citizens kind of review this, kind of putting it in the hands of the citizens, and so on. I'm still not sure which way, and I feel on this because I like the idea of the involvement of our residents in this process, so... of our residents in this process, so I'm still thinking.
Councilman Rushton?
I would just say, in response to Councilman Vincent's question, there is really two separate issues here. We do have the dissolving of the current system, and then we have the formation of a new system. And to not, you know, to not jump the gun to the next one, you know, I do think there's two separate and distinct things that we are faced with tonight and the direction we're moving forward. So I think you can be in favor of moving past the civil... This model and trying to retool or rework a new one with the pending ordinance.
You certainly want to have something in place before you dissolve the one.
Yes, at least in some kind of direction.
Councilman Bueller?
I think that's a good question for our acting city manager. What if this system is dissolved, and when we don't enact another system?
Ms. Cottle?
Do we have them in the wrong order?
No, I think they're in the right order on the agenda. I think that it would be, of course, imperative. I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about due process and process rights as it relates to employees, so we would just want to have a system in place that handles those. We could not go definitively without a system in place.
And further comment on the procedure and the system that we have in place or may have in place. The new hearing officer would not just hear public safety employees, but also all employees. Is that right?
That's right.
And currently, those other employees are heard by a committee that includes our city manager, who essentially gave the go-ahead probably to fire them in the first place. So this would be, in my view, a more separate and maybe open system than what we have in place. Furthermore, when we're looking at, well, this is a city employee, you can make the same argument with our state courts. The state brings those criminal prosecutions, and they're heard by another employee of the state, which is a judge. And that's not improper, that I don't know of any other way that we would do that. Here, if we contract with an administrative law judge or the equivalent, and that person was still operating independently, not paid for making what we think is the right decision, our decision would have always been to fire the employer, and the hearing would never have been held, but paid on a contract, I assume, for the number of hours worked or the time span adjudicating all of our employee cases and rendering them opinions. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's right.
And really, this, for the council, this provision causes me no pause at all.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. I believe we have been campaigning very big and loud that we want our city... We want our citizens involved in our city. And I go along with Steve Benson. I want people involved in this process. And that's what I want, given the opportunity to serve our city and to involve with our city.
Well, I need to just make a comment or two. Obviously, I was not here last week when this was discussed in the study meeting. Nice family vacation. I do occasionally take some time off. But this issue, the city may have been talking about it since 2011, but until I saw it on the agenda last week, had no idea there was an issue or concern. And so to me, of course, it comes very abrupt, not having had the background of the rest of you. In fact, of the council people here tonight, by far the newest. And so I'm a bit concerned about making a decision when I have had so little opportunity to understand what the problem was and how that problem will be fixed by making this change. And it may be very legitimate. It very well may be, I don't know. But I haven't heard that, and so it causes me pause to say, oh, you know, why are we doing this? So unless there's some pretty vigorous feedback from those of you here or somewhere, I just personally am reluctant to move forward at this time. Councilwoman Lang?
So, Ms. Cottle, would you mind explaining or the layperson's understanding of the... What we have in place and the hired attorney we have in place to instruct them on the legal matters?
Sure. I'd be happy to do that. And as part of that, I also would like to help the council sort of understand exactly how the larger structure works. As you're aware, and as we've really strived as a city over the last year and longer to ensure that our process, as it relates to these employees and to our police department, is very fair and also has a good overview from the citizenry. We have the citizen-based PSRB review board, which is all, as you heard me say, citizen-based. So we have that side of it. And then as it relates specifically to the... Almost what rises to the level of contractual obligation to an employee statutorily and their rights as that employee, then that is reviewed subsequently by this three-person body. And as it sits today, we have a three-person Civil Service Commission, and they are given legal direction by an outside attorney that we hire to give that separate legal direction. So when they, as citizenry, have a question, they can ask that attorney. These cases, the interesting dynamic there and the difficulty that we've seen is that these cases on the whole are very complex, and oftentimes, they involve volumes of documentation that we request that these lay folks look through and then seek to understand. And the real business of an adjudicator of this type of a situation is to apply the facts of the case to the rules. And that really is fundamentally almost a quasi-judicial function. It's a very high standard in the law. It's a very high standard that we're asking these citizens to meet. And so that outside counsel, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Lang, is really important to them, and that's how that functions currently. I think that if we, as we've seen the complexity in these employment cases increase over the last few years, we've really begun to see that seeking a more professional overview of those cases, as Councilman Bueller mentioned, would provide us with, both us and the employee, with a more detailed opinion that does what we're asking these folks to do, applies the facts to the rules in this situation, and gives us and the employees something to work with on the back end. Now, again, that is more a judicial or almost quasi-judicial function. And on the sort of front end of that, as it relates to the concerns of the council and the citizenry on those boards, we have the PSRB board on the other side that provides that citizen input to the policies we have in place and how those policies are being applied and handled by our police department. Does that answer your question now? Okay.
That was all explained to us last week, so that's the review. Because we are hiring an attorney now to help these three people understand all the testimony they're taking from the attorneys representing the city employees, and then also taking the information from our own city attorney that's giving the cities reason for the firing. So to me, having a professional that understands the law as these attorneys are presenting it, and not having them have to ask an attorney and interpret his interpretation, to me, it just makes more sense to have a professional law person understand it and not have to interpret. That's why I was voting for this, or make the second motion.
Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. If I'm not mistaken, I believe in this group, about... How many people? Six, huh? Is it six people in this group?
The Civil Service Commission?
Yes.
It's three.
Okay, three. I believe one of them is in legal department, correct? No?
They're citizen, laypeople.
However, I believe that we need to have the citizen involved in this case, in our city, and I strongly believe that because it's right now is the right time. Not the right time, but to make the chance because of some cases we have with John Collier and also Sean Kelly, I think that's not very good for us at this point in time. And I stick with my vote. I think the goal with Steve Benson over there is we need people involved, and we like we campaigned, and we need... We want like co-creator in our city, and that we encourage people to involve, and now we just stop it, and I think that's not very good. It's not the right time.
If I could, could I get a clarifying question? Once the commission makes a decision, is that the absolute end of the issue?
No, that decision is appealable, which is another great point. And to Councilman Bueller's point, the reason, the need for a very clear and definitive answer from the commission is because one party or the other may choose to appeal that.
So is the effect that the only change here, we would put it into the hands of those who are trained, or it could ultimately end anyway with the judge? We want to do that at the start rather than later? And this would remove anyone outside of the, almost, I guess, would I say that? Outside of the legal system from participating in that review? I thought the purpose of this commission was to bring in laypeople who represented more just like the common man, the reasonableness test, if you will, not the legal test. Is that not true?
I think that that, in theory, could have been the initial part of the reason. I think that it helps to understand when these employees are being terminated, sort of the human side of that as well. I think that that's part of the reason that the commission was instituted the way that it was. Certainly, as I mentioned before, my understanding of the concerns as of the last four or five years have been the literal complexity of the legal issues surrounding this situation. As we go along as a society, those issues are just becoming more and more complex as they relate to the law of employment.
Okay. Thank you. Some more comments? Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, I think maybe there's some confusion here between the Civil Service Commission and the Professional Review Board. Maybe we can kind of get a definition of those two so we're... We know what we're talking about here. So would that be okay if we ask for that?
Certainly. If you want to have that, that's a good thing, and I certainly want to listen.
And I would love to have our city attorney address that again. I think that he has a good, solid understanding of both sides of that. That will be helpful to the council, if that's okay, Mayor.
I think that will leave Councilwoman Vincent's request best.
Eric Bunderson, city attorney for West Valley City. The way that the process currently works, and remember, we're dealing with two separate employee appeal systems that we're trying to put together with this particular ordinance, but the way that it works on the police and fire side is that, let's say that there's an investigation into some kind of wrongdoing, an investigator completes that investigation and sends those facts forward to the Professional Standards Review Board. So let's say that it's an officer was accused of stealing something, and that officer was investigated by Internal Affairs, and then that investigation, at that point, would be sent to the Professional Standards Review Board. Now, you've got on your consent agenda two citizens who are going to be appointed to that board today, and that's the point at which the citizens are able to look at this fact scenario, this theft, and make recommendations to the chief as to what to do with this case. They find whether the accusations are, in their opinion, accurate. They find whether discipline is warranted, and they forward that on to the chief. So then the chief takes that, makes the decision. Let's just assume, for our example, that the chief decides to terminate the employee. At that point, that's when you move into this appellate process, which is right now the Civil Service Commission. So citizen review board all the way up, and then the appeal right now is the Civil Service Board. We're proposing, obviously, that it be the hearing officer at that point.
And Eric, would you mind just running through the makeup of both boards really quickly again, as far as numbers and...
Sure. The Professional Standards Review Board is seven members and completely citizen-run. There's a non-voting police officer, if you recall, you passed the ordinance last year, I believe. There's a non-voting police officer on the board. They're required to go through yearly training through my office, through the prosecutor's office, and then they just run their own system. The police help them out by, of course, giving them the cases to review. They review all uses of force, all disciplinary actions, all vehicle pursuits. They see everything that could potentially result in discipline with the police department. Civil Service Commission, the way they function right now is they handle a lot of HR, routine HR, human resource type of actions, and that is actually the majority of the work that they do. They approve promotional rosters, they approve exams, all the kind of routine human resources stuff that they've done for many, many years. And in addition to that, they do have appellate function that is only exercised very rarely, maybe every two or three years, where they have to act as these sort of quasi-judges who have to make this legal decision, which is then scrutinized by the Court of Appeals. Sorry, long answer?
And Mayor, I would just comment that certainly there is no proposal put forward, and I wouldn't support such a proposal to do away with the review board that would make a recommendation of the chief on hiring or firing. It's this appeal that I think ought to be handled by a contracted professional and provide the evidence and write a decision that can be understood and scrutinized at the next appellate level.
Thank you. And if I may now, see if I can summarize that, see if I've got it. So the Professional Standards Review Board, do they deal with anything? They deal with police and fire, but do they deal with other employees? Only those? So for other employees, the first place they go would be the Civil Service Commission?
No, because that's only for police and fire. But a hearing officer would fulfill that function as well as another function. Maybe we should put a clear from the city manager on the other function, which would be for non-public service employees, which is somebody that's working in parks or roads or...
Okay, so only police and fire go to the Civil Service Commission?
Ah, okay.
All right. And for other employees, there's another process?
Sure, and that depends on your status as an employee, if you're at will or for cause, and the reasons for the determination as per state law and our own requirements.
I've never gotten into this part of state law, so I missed a lot, just missing one bit. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Councilman...
Thank you.
The other process is important because we're actually changing that as well tonight at some point. So it's important to, I guess, understand that way and your familiarity and comfort with it. I've tried really hard not to throw the monkey wrench, I guess, in this discussion because I'm actually... I'm in favor of dissolving the current method of the Civil Service Commission. I believe that we need to work towards a more efficient, a more timely, and a more judicious practice. As I said last week and during our study meeting, you know, it's set up more now under kind of like a jury system where juries work real good if it's yes or no, but sometimes when there gets complicated issues of it, juries have a tendency to try to split the difference, and it creates problems and is problematic for not only the city but for the employee. And so I'm in favor of working towards a more... To have a more judicious, effective method of it. So I'm actually in favor of dissolving the word to it. My problem more is on the backside of actually the creation of the new process that we go to for this additional person and really, in some ways, this extra branch. The ordinance that we have tonight, which is that I wanted to kind of say, my hope was that we would dissolve the Civil Service Commission, and I could convince you all to amend the ordinance on the next one because I feel that that one fails to address how an appropriate way to appoint this person that could be... Have a lot of influence over the courses of how the city function is governed. Right now, in the new ordinance, there's one sentence that talks about who this person is and how this person would be appointed, and it basically just points to how we appointed somebody in administrative law. It's that they're appointed by the city manager, that they're a merit or a contract person, that they cannot be disciplined for any... that they cannot be disciplined for any decision made while conducting a hearing, they should be trained in knowledgeable and misdemeanors in traffic law, and they're not a supervisor, but they are supervised by the assistant city manager. I think that in the separation of powers, if the legislative branch is being asked to create a new judicial branch, but just say, executive branch, go do it, it's probably not enough checks and balances for me to move ahead on that in the important position, and I don't know, you know, if I'm going to give the keys to the car on this. You know, I think I would like a little, to know a little bit more on that. You know, maybe the answer is to go through a bid proposal process, to have a citizens' election committee process, to have a term of office on it. I think some of those basic things, and I think, you know, some things that we do in the city are a work in progress, and I'm fine to just kind of tinker with it and go through the years and that, but I think dealing with matters of employment and livelihood and providing service to the residents, that some issues that are, we should really try to anticipate and put in the necessary checks and balances on that. And so with the discussion that we've had so far, I mean, a little bit of a quandary here of, as was discussed, is I don't want to dissolve the Civil Service Commission if we're not ready to move forward on the, on a new form, but that's, just to lay all the cards on the table, I mean, that's, that's really my intent of it to this point.
Thank you. Further comment, discussion, Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, for your message. Mr. Funderson, can you come to the podium? I have a couple of questions, I want to try and understand, you know, you know, mind you? Thank you. So we have Professional Standard Review Board, we have seven members, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that those people, they are laypeople or they have a legal department background?
They are chosen as laypeople from the community. Now, some of them, as private citizens, do have some kind of legal background. One of them, in fact, the one who's here tonight, who's on your consent agenda to be the chairperson of the board, is actually a practicing criminal defense attorney. But their, their jobs all range, the gentleman last week, if you recall, he was a retired hospital administrator, I believe. So those seven, they just range the gamut of West Valley citizens, private West Valley citizens. You've had people who own small businesses, you've had people who are retired from the military, they just run the gamut, they're just your general, regular citizens.
So seven people, seven members in this group, Professional Standard Review Board, some of them in legal practice or they have done that before in legal department, and all of them are citizens in this city, correct?
That's correct. They're required by ordinance to be citizens in the city.
Okay. The second question I'd ask you is, Civil Service Commission, the three people, three members, three members, correct?
Yes, sir.
And none of them is to have a legal background?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. And before, okay, let me go back a little bit. Police department or fire department, if someone has done something wrong, they're going to go to Professional Standard Review Board, correct?
Just, just the police, actually.
Police, excellent.
The Professional Standards Review Board only applies to the police.
Police, okay.
Fire would tell you they don't ever do anything wrong.
Okay. Okay. So they go to the Stand, Professional Standard Review Board, and seven members in that group have some legal background, okay? And then look at the case, and if it doesn't go well, we're going to go to appellate court, appellate court is sent to Service, Civil Service Commission, they've been three members. So that means they have multiple layers, you see, two layers, one of seven and one of three.
That's, that's correct.
Correct. And all of them is a member in this city.
All ten.
All ten, right?
Ten of those combined people are members of West Valley, or citizens of West Valley.
Citizens in this city. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Funderson.
Yes, sir.
Further comments or discussion?
Does he make a final comment? Mayor, I think we will vote on what's before us and consider the next ordinance when it comes up.
Okay. Then we'll...
I'll call the question. We have, had had discussion to the motion, there's a motion, a second, I can ask the question, we call.
Okay. Calling the question, although I think that there was no more discussion, but since you've made the motion to call the question, I agree that requires a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Then we'll vote on calling the question, not on the motion. This is to end debate. All in favor of ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion passes unanimously. The motion is now before us then to approve Resolution 14-120. And I'm just thinking there about whether we do a voice vote or roll call, since there's going to be some, make it easier for, for our recorder, we'll do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Bueller?
Hi.
Mr. Rushden?
Aye.
No.
Motion passes by majority vote. Okay, next on our agenda is to authorize West Valley City Council to spend up to $100,000 on a review of the McQuarrie proposal. Currently, the city is in a process of evaluating a proposed contract with McQuarrie on assuming the build-out and operation of the fiber optic network that was known, I guess, still known as Utopia. And the council has determined that they want to get an independent evaluator, advisor, to assist in that process of them making their final decision. So this proposal then would authorize the hiring of an individual up to $100,000, but not more, to assist in that evaluation that would report to the council directly. This would be an individual who is not currently a part of the city, part of Utopia, or part of McQuarrie, so it would be some independent evaluation. That is the resolution that's before us. Any further discussion or comment or action to this Resolution 14-121? Councilman Rushden?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move approval of Resolution 14-121.
Okay. That motion is before us, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Vincent is the second. The motion is properly before us. Any discussion, further discussion to the motion? Councilman Rushden?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that how, as mentioned in public comment tonight, the Utopia question has been, the burden and the potential of that has been with the city for over a decade now, and I'm pleased that not only our city manager and his team, but as well this city council has identified it as such an important issue that we've asked for independent study and further review on it, and I'm also very pleased that we have the expertise with our mayor that is willing to represent the council and the city, the city council's interest in, in asking the tough questions and getting to the, getting to the bottom of so many questions that our residents have, that was brought up tonight by Claudia and many other people out there that have questions on the proposal going forward. And so since this is such an important thing, I'm just real pleased that, that the pieces are coming in place for us to get as much information as, as humanly possible.
And I would clarify that as the mayor, I've been appointed by the council as the liaison, I believe is the language in the resolution, between this individual and the council, to gather the information and report back to the council, and also to take information from the council and questions from the council to this individual for them to research and work on. So the council, as a body, is driving this issue, and although I will be the liaison, I will represent the council on that and their desires and wishes. Further discussion? Seeing that, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 14-121 for $100,000, up to $100,000 on a review of the McQuarrie proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We now go to ordinance 14-32. This is the next related item, that were the next sections of our city municipal code to bring our employee appeals board in compliance with state law. This one's a little more technical, I will turn to Ms. Cottle to somewhat introduce that, just to summarize it for our record, and have that on here.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So as we've talked about before, as, as employees, there is a property interest involved in that employment, and as such, when that property interest is changed or taken away or ended, there is a due process right that goes along with that by state law. And this ordinance is a part of what we discussed earlier, and also the bringing in of the public employees together under an appeal process that provides for a review of those actions as it relates to the property interest of the employee. And as we discussed earlier, this would set up that process as a hearing officer that would, that would hear that for the tenure employees and would allow for a resolution of that that would be appealable to the appeals court as required or needed. I can answer any questions.
To the council then, for comment or action. Councilman Bueller?
Thank you. Ms. Cottle, in the previous discussion, Mr. Rushden mentioned the outline for this person to be hired. Was his summary substantially correct?
The summary that he read off was correct, yes. I do think that in answer to his question, certainly, we, as staff, would take your direction as council. Should you choose to approve this tonight with a motion directing us to bring back a policy on that hiring, or should you desire to make changes here? We could accommodate that or bring something back to you.
And there are certain positions in the city where the city manager would make an appointment, and then it would be subject to ratification by the council, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But this as, as written, is not one of those, am I understanding that right?
This is written, and I'm going to have to defer to Eric on the specific language there, because I haven't read that today, with regards to the appointment of an ALJ or hearing officer this year.
Eric Funderson, West Valley City Attorney. The, the practice that we have always followed in assigning contracts to ALJs is council approval. And the reason for that, frankly, is we have always contracted with them, and we need council approval to do that.
Because of the contract?
That's correct.
And so this would fall within those parameters because of the contract?
Absolutely.
The, mind the section, and I'll pull it back up under, thank you. It's Section 3, 2, 104, and it says, "It may be merit or contract."
So if we made it a contract position, we could potentially amend that.
You know, I'm open for two suggestions, but I mean, that would be, that would alleviate one concern.
Sure, and again, if you as council chose to do that, you could do that by motion tonight or direct staff.
Right, because we have voted to eliminate the public from the Civil Service Commission, and we need to replace it with something that we continue to ask to have it brought back with some changes or we make the changes.
Yeah, and I would submit, my concern, and we can get an improvement from the city attorney as well, my concern with continuance is that if we do that, we do that in a very modest timeframe, because of course, employment actions in a city of 1,000 employees are daily occurrences, and so we need to have a process by which those folks can be secure in their due process review. Now that we've voted, not that you, I'm sorry, have voted as a council to do away with the prior procedure, being without a process for a period of time provides some significant uncertainty to the city, even in a, even in a very short timeframe. And I don't know, Eric would like to add that.
Eric Funderson, agreed.
Councilman Bueller? Are you done?
Yes.
Then to the council, for the comment, discussion, action. If there's no further comment, no further requests for action, we would probably move forward on our agenda. But before I do that, I want to make sure that... Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, I just, I would, I mean, Councilman Rushden has made some suggestions, and I guess, I would like to, I guess, see how that would land in the actual ordinance and how that would be worded, and I don't know if Councilman Rushden has kind of written that out or crossed off some lines and added some lines, or I would like to see what, what that is. Because I agree that, I mean, if we could take care of this tonight, I think we should, and so if we've got some amendments that need to be made, I think we have to work with those tonight.
Councilman Rushden, are you prepared to do that?
As far as actually the actual lines on the, on the ordinance, you know, I don't know if I would be prepared to do that, as, I would be afraid of putting something in that might be in conflict with another section of our city code or ordinance, as there's about five of them that are referenced going through this process. I think as far as broad direction, I threw out, you know, things, I, I think like with this, we talked about our, you know, audit review process, where we hire an auditor, you know, we have a committee that oversees it. I would think just the broad terms of checks and balances that, you know, I think of would be to go through a proposal process, to have a selection committee assist the city manager in this, and have a term affixed to it. This is, you know, and I guess I'm waiting for somebody to tell me, like, no, that's a bad idea, or, or this would conflict with this section or that, but I think that gets me to the point of saying, okay, there's enough checks and balances from the legislative side to the judicial side that, that they can avoid some pitfalls that maybe come down the road. So I guess my question would be, is that enough, is that enough direction that the staff could bring us back, like, next week?
And maybe Ms. Cottle can answer the question of, if they pass it tonight, we can still amend it next week, or should it be held and then amended next week?
My preference, given the 1,000 employees that we have relying on that, even in the short seven days here, would be that if they, if the council's so inclined to pass, that they do so with a motion directing the staff specific to the concern. So the staff, the, the motion could be something along the line of Councilman, Councilmember Rushden, with regards to the appropriate checks and balances and direction that the staff bring back, language specific to that, and we can do that several ways. You could do that, you could leave the way that it's written in, in the ordinance in place and direct that the policy be attached to that. The very typical manner in which we hire these, as Mr. Funderson suggested, requires that that be brought, that contract be brought back to you, so we could stay within not that construct, but you could say as part of your motion, we as the legislative body, for lack of a better way to put it, are, you do all the upfront stuff, but we, in this situation, we want this contract brought to us every time you hire someone, and you can put that in as part of your motion, and we would add that administratively to the ordinance and proceed in that manner. So there are several ways to affect that ultimate outcome. I think the very safest thing for us to do is to replace this process that we dissolved earlier tonight with something tonight. We could also, as the mayor suggested, be directed to bring back specifics to you next week in whatever form we prefer. So there are ways to accomplish the, the goal.
One other clarification, as you referred to different cases coming forward, can those be delayed for a week? In other words, as employees bring them forward, is there a timeframe that they have to be done in?
So it's not the, the ones that are currently in the pipeline that I have concern with, it's whatever might happen anew tomorrow. So whatever employee... So whatever employee concern might be raised tomorrow that we don't know about today, the legal question that that sets up for us and them is, under what, under what scenario are we functioning? And right now, the scenario that we're functioning under would be nothing. That causes a legal concern. So it's not that the case is in the pipeline, that's a clear-cut issue, it's much more the new case that might come up tomorrow. Sir.
Okay, let's see. So Councilman Bueller first, or Councilman?
And I think that all of the points raised by Councilman Rushton are valid, and I would agree with those. I wouldn't have passed them to write them all down, but who could direct staff to?
Good job. Thank you.
I mean, I don't...
Thank you. It's good it's done, but we'll see.
I totally agree. Contract employee...
Thank you very much.
So...
I appreciate the motion, and the view of the appointment. Without all of them, I'm not sure, but...
I think based...
Councilman Rushton?
Thank you. I think based off of the information and the counsel that we've had, is that I'd be prepared to make the motion to approve the ordinance, just deleting that the provision that says that the city manager shall appoint a hearing officer pursuant to the procedure set forth in municipal section 32104, and just replace the section 32104 with administrative policy appendix consisting of contract, council approval, proposal process, selection committee, and term. Second motion.
Now we have a substitute motion properly before us, and it has been seconded. Recorder, about that? Okay. The motion is before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of the substitute motion to approve ordinance 14-32 with the change as enumerated by Councilman Rushton, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to our consent agenda. We have four items there, ratifying two appointments by the city manager. One, Abigail Dizon, I think Ma, who is here with us tonight as chairperson of the Professional Standards Review Board, and also the appointment of, what I don't think is here, Adelise Romero to the Professional Standards Review Board. And then also, two resolutions for a grant of temporary construction easement from Harmon City Associates, that's to finish out the drain project that has been going on on 40th West there. We'll take it up to the corner there. My understanding was that they could not simply reinsert the new pipe into the old line, they actually have to replace it, it deteriorated so bad. And this pretty routine just to complete that project. Any desire to separate those? If not, then we'll entertain a motion?
Mayor, I would move that we suspend our rules and allow for Ms. Dizon Ma to come up to the microphone and introduce herself to us and tell her, tell us a little bit about herself and her desire to serve the city in this capacity. And at the completion of her remarks, I would move that we approve the four items of the consent agenda.
Okay. Two motions there. The first motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of suspending our rules to allow public input, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We suspend the rule to allow comment. If, is it Dizon Ma?
Dizon Ma.
Dizon.
So close. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Abigail Dizon Ma. I have been a resident of West Valley City now for almost eight years. As Eric pointed out earlier, I am a private defense council in Salt Lake City. I am practicing solo, which is always fun. It's always an adventure. And I have now been, I have now completed my first year on the Professional Standards Review Board. What drew me to the review board was, unfortunately, all of the negative attention that was in the newspaper about our fine men in blue, men and women in blue. And hearing all of the negative comments, I felt like I wanted to do something that I felt like our city was getting a back rub. I love living in the West Valley. I've lived on the west side my entire life. I was born in Kearns, now I live here. And I really got tired of trying to defend my city to my friends, but not being able to do anything about it. So when I saw that there was a position open with a PSRB, I immediately applied. Now, being a defense attorney, that may seem as a natural enemy too, to police officers, but I assure you that it's not. I have really enjoyed my time with the PSRB. I have grown to deeply respect and admire all of our police officers and everything that they do for the city. And I appreciate the opportunity now to serve as the chair of the board. It's been an eye-opening experience, and I'm looking forward to the next two years of serving the city, the citizens, and the West Valley City Police Department. So thank you. And do you have any questions or comments that you want to, that you want to throw at me? You don't always get a defense attorney on the stand, so take your best shot.
All right. Well, let's turn to our attorney, Councilman Bueller.
As another sole practitioner in West Valley City and resident here, and wherever you've been all our lives, we're happy to have you on the board and appreciate your input. And I really do appreciate the opinions that you expressed, those opinions reflect my own. We have a lot of good police officers and other city employees, and it's just easy to sit back sometimes in Monday morning, order back everything and be critical of things. Unfortunately, those criticisms are juicy reading and make the press.
And unfortunately, they're not always true.
Thanks for correcting the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we'll go back to Mr. Rushton, and to make sure the motion is properly placed, will you please reintroduce it?
Sure, I would move that we approve the four items of our consent agenda.
Do we have a motion before us? Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Vincent has the second. The motion is properly before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place the motion for a vote to approve our consent agenda resolutions 14-122 through 14-125. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We've come to the end of our agenda. We would ask, just a reminder, maybe just meet for a few minutes with Ms. Holliday and friends, maybe Mr. Willardson be available too, to just give them some insight. And with that, we do have a need for an executive session, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn and then meet an executive session.
Mayor, I would move that we adjourn this meeting and meet an executive session to discuss the disposition of roll profit.
Thank you. That is the correct motion.
Second?
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously.